All right, I'm gonna call this meeting to order of the Mayor and Board of Commissioners for January thirteenth, 2015, at 7:00 PM. Can I get the roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Scully?
Here.
Commissioner Walker?
Here.
Commissioner Authenreth?
Here.
Commissioner Warnock? Mayor Marion?
Here.
One absent. Commissioner Warnock?
Commissioner Warnock went ahead and called the town administrator and let him know that he's gonna be running about twenty minutes late. He had a funeral to attend, unfortunately, and he'd called me and said that he was gonna be about ten minutes late, and then he got stuck in standstill traffic. So, he'll be about twenty-five minutes late. So, we're gonna proceed without him, and he'll come in halfway through. Can I get the, can we do the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you bow your heads with me for a brief prayer, please? Precious God, I pray for the town of Rising Sun tonight and this elected body. I hope you continue to guide us in a Christ-like way, and you watch over us and our town, and the citizens of our town. I pray for our warriors overseas, and please protect them. I pray for the people of France and the tragedy that occurred there this past week. And I pray for those people that may be in need and may feel your hand, God. So, in Jesus' name, amen. Thank you. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes. First, it's December ninth, town meeting. Can I get a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion regarding the December ninth, 2014, meeting? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
It passes. Same thing, January fifth, 2015. I believe this was our special meeting that we had to honor law enforcement. Can I get a motion to approve these minutes?
I move to approve minutes.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Is it the fifth or the sixth?
Yeah, it's the, you're right, it is the sixth. The agenda says the fifth.
Okay.
So, we'll make that change. It is the sixth. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Passes. Okay. I'm actually gonna skip around a little bit and let our auditor go ahead first. So, if that's okay with you, and you're ready, okay? For fiscal year 2014, the floor is yours, sir. Thank you.
Mayor, could I give an introduction first?
Oh, sure. If Calvin wants to go ahead and do an introduction, that's fine.
I want to introduce Mr. Robert Disse from Lindsay &amp; Associates. For the elected bodies, some that have been here for a while, last year, we put the audit services out to bid, and we changed auditors. One of the things the town of Rising Sun used to do is it had the same auditor for about twenty-five years, and that's not really a good thing to have. So, in 2007, 2008, we got a new auditor, and we retained them until last fiscal year. Actually, we had them for three years, we put it out to bid again, they were the low bid again, we went with them for one more year, and then last year, we put it out to bid, and Lindsay &amp; Associates got the bid for that. So, this is a brand-new, fresh set of eyes looking at our financials, which is always important to ensure financial integrity and accountability. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Disse.
Okay.
If you wanna go up to the podium, that would be great.
All right.
Thank you.
Good side. I don't have one. Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Bob Disse. As he said, with Lindsay &amp; Associates, and we've done the town audit for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, 2014. What I'm gonna do is just kinda, I see you've got it in front of you, you've probably read it thoroughly, and I can ask you questions, but I'm just gonna go through it and hit some highlights. Not gonna go through it in excruciating detail, 'cause that would be excruciating. The auditor's opinion letter is there on page one. She keeps trying to get a good picture of me, that ain't gonna happen. And it says, "We give the town a clean opinion," also now called an unmodified opinion. It means we give reasonable assurance, not absolute, but reasonable assurance, that the statements are not materially misstated. And that's the kind of opinion you're looking for. And notice it's dated October 28th, before the deadline. Let me see. Beginning on page three and going for usually about ten pages through page nine is what's called the Management's Discussion and Analysis. It's not written by us, it's written by the town management, probably Calvin, maybe with input from others, but it tells the reader whatever the town wants you to know. It has to focus on the current year, meaning 2014, and compares to 2013, and talks about any differences between the two, and there's also a section for looking ahead, next year's budget, that sort of thing. The actual financial statements begin on page 10. Now, it's important to know, you've got two sets of financial statements. First one is on the full accrual basis of accounting. That's, the balance sheet is there on page 10. It takes everything of the town into effect, into account, including fixed assets, depreciation, expense, all of those things. First, you've got your governmental activities, and then also your business-type activities, which is your water and sewer fund. But as expected, you've got your assets on top, your current assets, and then the non-current assets, meaning your fixed assets, below that liabilities, any long-term liabilities, and finally, the equity. The related income statement is there on page 11, and it's a little odd, it starts with expenses over here on the far left, and that includes things like depreciation expense, things that aren't necessarily financial, or cash going out, and then the associated revenues by department go across, and then finally, coming down, is the general revenues, things like property tax, income tax, things that aren't associated with a particular department of the town. And that format is dictated by the GASB board, not us. I didn't come up with it. The other set of financial statements is on, are on page 12 and 13, and those are on what's called the Modified Accrual Basis of Accounting. They only take into account current assets and current liabilities. There's no fixed assets, no depreciation, no accumulated depreciation, no long-term debt, just current assets and current liabilities. And there, you've got the assets on top, the liabilities, and equity down at the bottom. Over to the right of that statement is a reconciliation. It shows what's the difference between this income state, excuse me, this balance sheet and the other balance sheet, and that's always gonna be things like fixed assets and long-term debt. The related income statement is then on page 13, with the revenues on top and the expenditures down at the bottom, as you might expect, and again, there's a reconciliation over to On page 14 is the beginning of the business-type activities, as in the enterprise or proprietary funds, your water and sewer funds. You've got the balance sheet, which is the same as the first balance sheet we saw back on page 10, and the income statement. There on page 16 is a statement of cash flows, shows where the money came from and where it went. The notes to the financial statements begin on page 17, and these are really interesting if you're having a hard time sleeping, so you might wanna read through these. It's mostly boilerplate, as in, it's gonna be the exact same from year to year, and it's all stuff that's required to be in there. So, I'm not gonna go through that in any great detail. I'll just point out a couple of things you might wanna look at. The note on investments and deposits is note three, page 25, somewhere in here, there it is, page 27, we say what the town's investments are. It's mostly MLGIP, the Maryland Local Government Investment Pool. That's it. On the next page, note six, we talk about the fixed assets, capital assets of the town, the beginning balance, then the increases. What did you capitalize? You capitalized a little over a million dollars' worth of stuff, and then the associated depreciation expense, and that's in the governmental activities, and the business-type activities are on the next page. Looks like you have some construction in progress for the sewer system, a little bit for the water system, and then the depreciation below that. Long-term debt, we start talking about that on the next page. There's a summary of it on page 31, shows all your beginning balances and then ending And that's the most interesting part of it, the part that people always seem to be most interested in, is the last page on page 35, where the required supplementary information, we show the original budget and final budget, and compare that to the actual, and show the variance. And that's the end of the actual financial statements. We've also issued a, it's called a SAS 112, no, 114, letter, which talks about the standards we used to perform the audit. It notes that we did not have any disagreements with management, didn't find any fraud, and also, we did not issue what used to call a management letter, as in, we didn't come up with any internal control deficiencies. And if anybody had any questions, well...
So, basically, in layman terms, you're saying we're in good shape?
An auditor's never gonna say that, but we gave the, but these statements represent the town's position as of June 30th. Yes?
Can you spell your missing?
D-I-S-S.
Thank you.
Yes.
I think it's notable to point out that one of the town's loans was extinguished during this, this time period, so that, that reduces debt service.
Mm-hmm. That's gonna be found. You're gonna see that on page 31.
Right.
Mm-hmm. All right, there you go. Vehicle loan, MBRS.
Mm-hmm.
I'm gonna guess that's National Bank of Rising Sun.
It used to be.
Used to be.
That's another story.
It's, it's now Howard Bank.
Okay.
Does anyone else have any more questions? I think you're good.
Well, thank you. I hope I've been brief enough.
Didn't bore you too much.
If you have questions later throughout the course of the year, feel free to give us a call. Our number's at the top of page one.
Thank you so much.
My name's Bob Disse. Thank you very much. It's a pleasure being here.
Thanks for your work.
It's a good town to work with. We enjoy it quite a bit.
Thank you.
Good. I'll have some coffee. That was on the house.
Can I get a motion to accept the auditor's report tonight?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any more questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes. Thank you. All right, we are going to move into another public presentation tonight. I was hopeful that Commissioner Warnock would actually be able to get here, but unfortunately, he wasn't. So, I'm gonna go ahead and move forward with the Citizen of the Year presentation. I'm gonna read a brief statement, and then I'll come out and present the award to our winner. So, here we go. Tonight, I have the privilege and honor to award Rising Sun's 2014 Citizen of the Year. The Citizen of the Year Award was created two years ago as an opportunity for the town of Rising Sun to recognize an outstanding member of the community each year. The Citizen of the Year is someone who's made an impact in our community through significant volunteer action, and whose leadership has led to the betterment of our town. This year's award winner was a unanimous decision. This person has done so much for our community, from planning the first-ever color run in Cecil County with the support of Way of Life Community Church, to taking the reins of our annual fall spooktacular and making it even more a success. This person has one word that comes to mind when I think of this person, and that is spirit. This person has an infectious spirit. She is always smiling, she always has a smile on her face, and whenever you ask her to do something, she is always willing to bend over backwards to help us at the town of Rising Sun. She is a joy to work with, and I cannot wait to see what ideas she brings to the town of Rising Sun in 2015. So, with that said, I'm going to honor, I'm going to ask Ms. Desiree Davis to come up, please.
It's up to you. Travis will tell you when to say something.
Neither, it's fine.
Just, you know, you're fine.
Okay, it's fine. On behalf of the town of Rising Sun, we are really excited to announce our 2014 Citizen of the Year, Ms. Desiree Davis. So, there you go.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
I'm actually getting ready to announce that, Commissioner Authenreth. We just had a very productive conversation regarding the second year of our color run.
Anything else that she's gonna be helping us with?
What are you leading up to, Alan?
Is there something you have in mind?
Well, no, but I know that, as you said, she's a very valuable asset to our town, and she's been involved in quite a few things, and the work she did under the, with the spooktacular this year was, was great. So, did you have any plans for anything else to involve her in, was what I was interested in?
Well, I mean, the biggest thing was, we definitely tried to do a winter event this year that didn't end up panning out. So, I mean, I was actually trying to get an ice skating rink, and that was a big move to try to get, so hopefully, that's something that we can move forward in.
Are there other items that Ms. Davis is involved in in town that we can mention and embarrass her a little more? While she's out of the room?
Oh, okay. Ms. Davis, is there other, Commissioner Authenreth is inclining about another event, I guess?
What else are you involved with in town, Desiree, that, other than just the things that we've used you and your family for?
My husband and I lead up the children's program at Way of Life Community and the youth program at Way of Life Community. Actually, I have to go back over to our youth group here, do you know this?
And how could we find, how could we find out more about what you have going on? Where could people look that are not here tonight?
For, at, for the church events, for the...
Events you're involved with?
Facebook, on wayoflifecommunity.org. They have a webpage of all the things that we do there also, and we always announce things on Facebook of what's been happening, and we, the, our youth groups, that it's primarily for middle schoolers, from sixth and ninth graders, and we encourage all sixth and ninth graders in the community to come out. It's not just closed to people that come to Way of Life. They can come to, we really want this to be a good middle school age group.
And you had some type of relationship with Santa this year, I saw, too, didn't you?
I'm lucky to have Santa as my dad.
Yeah, so, and, you know, we're very lucky to have you doing what you do. We know in the past, you and your family went up to New York after the superstorm, Superstorm Sandy, I have such a hard time saying that. So, like I said, basically, what I'm saying is, thank you, I've known you for a while now, and we really appreciate all you've done, and all the help you've gave Mayor Marion with the new projects that he's brought into town, and, and keep helping us out. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks, Desiree.
Thank you.
So, moving forward, we're gonna move into, and you have my permission to go, Desiree. I know you have to head back to church, so that's fine. No worries. We're gonna move forward into business meeting items. The first thing on our business meeting items is our Economic Development RFP Review Committee. Town Administrator, do you have those names by chance?
Do you have the memo there?
I do not. Do you have a copy for me? Thank you so much.
Huh?
You're great.
You probably have it.
I didn't, I don't see it. I just have meeting minutes. Forgot the mayor. All right, I'm gonna read this, and then I'm gonna ask the board, I'm gonna make these appointments and ask the board's permission to approve them. Mayor and Commissioners, this coming Friday, January the sixteenth, 2015, we will open the bids for the Economic Development and Community Realization Study. Once the bids are open, I would like to forward the bid packages to a five-person review committee that will charge, that will be charged with review, with reviewing each bid and grading responses based upon a scoring sheet that I provided to them. Upon conclusion of their independent grading, the committee will meet to discuss the pros and cons of each proposal determined, determining who is the most qualified bidder and, who the most qualified bidder is, and make a recommendation to the mayor and commissioners to award the bid to the selected firm. In consideration of those who serve on this review committee, I would like to recommend the following people to serve on this committee. I have listed the town, as far as the town elected body goes, thank you, as far as the town elected body goes, I have myself listed, Commissioner Dave Warnock, Commissioner Alan Authenreth, County Commissioner Dan Scheckenberg, Ms. Lisa Webb from the Cecil County Economic Development, and Mr. Kevin Baines from the Director of Office of Programs of Regional Development for the Maryland Department of Community Housing and Development. So, can I get a motion to approve this package of a five-person review committee?
I'll move to approve it.
Six, excuse me, six people, review committee, yes.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. All right, next thing on our agenda is citizens' input. We do not have any speakers this evening. Would anyone like to speak tonight? Okay, hearing none. We're gonna move into the mayor's report. My report will be brief. As most of you know, I missed our last meeting that we had in December because I was ill, and then unfortunately, I gave it to Commissioner Scully, who gave it to Commissioner Warnock, and we passed it along to other staff members, so I'm glad that I'm feeling much better. I had a really productive meeting yesterday with Delegate Hornberger. He is excited to start working on projects here, not only in Rising Sun, but in Cecil County as a whole. I'm looking forward to speaking to him more, and trying to rack his brain on opportunities that the state might have for the town of Rising Sun. I was honored to have the opportunity to award letters of recommendation to ten scout members from Troop 93, who ranked up to the Eagle Scout badge, and Commissioner Warnock was gracious enough to come along with me as my guest, to kinda keep me in order, because there were so many scouts that I was trying to keep their names all in order when I presented their letters of recommendation. So, that was a great event, and I wanna say a big shout-out to them for, all ten of them, from the same scout troop, earned Eagle Scout badges. So, that's excellent. I will be attending Cecil Night in Annapolis, that is in two days. I'm looking forward to it, I'm looking forward to networking with our new elected officials that were just recently elected, and along with seeing some old friends down there as well. And I also wanted to say, as many of you might know, we had a wonderful presentation on January 6th, where we presented a special proclamation to honor law enforcement this month. Many of us have ribbons that we are wearing to support our police. We do have some beautiful blue lights that are out there illuminating town hall, and I wanna say a big thank you to both the newspapers. I've been astonished with the amount of outreach that we have received. We've received emails, I received emails from Anarundel County up into Pennsylvania, from them wanting to replicate what the town of Rising Sun has done in supporting our police. So, I think the big thing to note is, police lives do matter, and it is important that we honor them, because we may not call our police department on the nicest day, but we need to know, they need to know that we have their back. So, I'm honored to be able to do that this month. With that being said, I'm going to move into staff reports. Chief Peterson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. First, what I, what I would like to start with is a thank you to you and the Board of Commissioners for the proclamation, your presentation of pins to the law enforcement officers of my department. It is great to know that we have the support of the town. In light of all that's going on in this country, on a daily basis, I get reports of different incidents around the country, and a lot of concerns locally about law enforcement, and the threats that are now coming to law enforcement. It would make a law enforcement officer question if they're doing the right thing. And it's, it's very important to know that we have support, that we are doing what's right for the communities we serve. So, I'd like to say thank you on behalf of my department. My report's rather brief this week, and it's been brief lately a lot, but having been the end of the year, we have to go through several audits, close out some grants, add on to different programs. So, we've been doing quite a bit of self-auditing, self-closure of different reports, and a lot of things that we have to meet requirements for the state. So, we have been busy. We've had 522 calls for service since the last meeting, which was December 10th. Most notable is the number of assaults have gone up, and the number of arrests for assaults. Those are situations that generally come about from domestic violence, which none of us, you know, like. We deal with it, we make the proper recommendations, and the proper follow-up to see if that situation can be resolved in some form or fashion. In the previous meetings, we spoke about body cameras for the police officers. After looking at several different manufacturers, we've gotten down to the point where we're looking at a Axon Body Camera, which is made by Taser. It mimics the eye, it has all of the qualities of chain of evidence that we are gonna require, so that our officers and the evidence that they collect when they're on the scene of something is preserved and can be used in court. We're looking at, again, trading in some older equipment to offset the cost. Currently, those cameras cost about $399 each, and if we can get a better deal on that, we will. There's also a grant available through our insurance company, Legit, that may also offset that cost. So, we've moved quite a ways forward in identifying the cameras, and now it's seeing what best deal we can get. Beyond that, we haven't had too many issues. There hasn't been anything that's very notable. If there's any questions, I'll entertain those now. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Town Administrator?
Thank you, Mayor. Two items that I wanted to go over with you. It's the beginning of the calendar year, and as such, we get, we have to provide notification to the county finance and tax office to list properties for tax sale, for a variety of reasons. Some might not have paid their property taxes, or mostly, in our case, it's people that have not paid their utility bills. And it's something that we've tried to be very considerate about over the last couple of years, and we've modified our approach. And so, what you have in front of you is a list of nine properties that our staff is recommending be forwarded to tax sale.
Thank you.
Some important notes about these properties. There are nine total properties listed on your sheet. Last year, there were fourteen properties that we sent to tax sale. All of the properties on this list are vacant, and the water has been turned off for over six months. So, we're not, by sending somebody to tax sale, we're not technically displacing somebody out of their home. The houses have already been abandoned or left for a variety of reasons. So, these are properties that no one's living in right now, and the water has been turned off. Uh... Of the nine properties on the list this year, there are five repeats from last year, which means that one way you can look at it is the taxpayers rightfully got paid for what they were owed. If we had not put the properties to tax sale, though, you could hypothetically say that a good number of those 14 properties, at the very least the five that are having reoccurring problems this year, would not have paid last year. And that is something that the town, you just went through the audit process. When the auditor spoke about the management review letter, in the past, the town used to get flagged for having too many liabilities on the books, which was basically unpaid taxes, unpaid utility bills. And it, we cleaned that up. That's one of the areas that we've cleaned up, but yet at the same time, we're not trying to be insensitive to some of the issues that people have. So again, these properties are vacant, and they've not paid the water bill for at least six months. There are a handful of people that are three months behind, four months behind, these are off six months or more. The total amount that you see includes a 15% administrative charge because above and beyond the administrative costs we have of reviewing all the records and documenting this and then tracking it through the tax sale process, the county automatically deducts 10% of whatever they collect. So in essence, we're passing that 10% plus our administrative charge onto these properties. A good number of these properties are also foreclosed properties that the banks are sitting on, and they're just sitting here. The other item, property owners can continue to make payments on these outstanding bills up through February, towards about the last, up about a week before the end of February, they can continue to make payments to the town of Rising Sun, and they would be removed from the list, from the county. They can still continue to make payments after the official listing goes out, and as long as they pay the required bill before it goes to tax sale, then they're fine. But to have a starting and finishing point, they really need to get them paid up through February. So you can see the total amount of the nine properties with the administrative costs included is $15,799.50. So as we've done in the past, we request the board to authorize these nine properties to go to tax sale.
Can I get a motion to move forward with sending these properties to tax sale?
I say move.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Thank you.
All right, the other thing that I have, and this is sort of a maybe rain on our parade message that I want to get out to everybody. And the board has a, basically a synopsis of a memo that I provided you that, in general, I think we have to be honest with ourselves to some degree, and the town as a whole needs to be honest about how difficult the last four years or so have been in terms of the town focusing on capital improvement or upgrades to the very important infrastructure, building components, replacements of equipment. In the last four years, I'm going to show you in this short little presentation, the town has seen a lot of its money spent on unbudgeted items and things that are beyond our control to a staggering amount of money. And I'm going to show, people always ask what the impact is of that money. I'm going to give you an example of how it has gradually hurt the town of Rising Sun over a couple of years and why it's going to, it's something we have to deal with going forward. So as most of you are aware, the town has been financially performing very well over the last couple of years despite roughly $200,000 in unnecessary legal expenses and the past elected bodies doing a great job of not raising the taxes and pulling the belt in on expenses here. And we've been able to improve services and provide new things like credit card payments and these community events, and we've been able to purchase some police cars and replace water meters. But no pun intended, it's really a drop in the bucket of what our overall needs this town is facing over the next, say, five, 10 to 15 years. So as I've said over the last three budget cycles, although the town is finishing each year with a small positive, and you just saw that in your accounting statements, you know, every year we finish $50,000 in the black, $100,000 here, there are drops in the bucket for what our expenses are. So even though every year we finish with a positive, there are some significant expenditures that will need to be planned for over the next two to five years that total roughly anywhere from $15 to $18 million. Now, when I say the term "planned for" over the next two to three years, I'm not suggesting that those expenditures have to be done, but I am suggesting the only way to get around these daunting numbers is to sit down, roll up our sleeves, identify what they are, and start putting a strategic plan together to start dealing with those expenditures. So some of the ideas, some of the things that we are looking at, and I'll put this up so some of the residents can see. I've been here since 2007, and these items that you see here are things that the town was talking about long before I came here in 2007. And these numbers that I'm providing for you are a little bit of 2009 numbers, which is the last time we really effectively tried to deal with these issues, and then some things that have changed over the last couple of years. But I think it's important that not only the elected body understand these, but the residents understand these because we've had, we've done a great job over the last six months with our public relations and feeling good about a community, and now we need to roll up our sleeves and finally stop kicking this can down the road that's been done, you know, at least over the last 10 to 15 years. We all know the horror story about our sewer plant. I believe previous Commissioner Augie Pearson used to talk about it, that in the late 1990s, the town had an estimated cost to bring its sewer plant into compliance of about $2.5 to $3 million. And here, a little over 12, 13 years later, the taxpayers are paying, you know, $13 million to bring the plant into compliance. So these costs escalate every year that they don't get addressed. So I want to make sure we understand some of these things. The first item that we have here is roughly $2 to $3 million to decommission the lagoon. Back in 2009, when MDE finally said to the town of Rising Sun, you know, you've been trying to get this project, this sewer plant built, but it's not working for a lot of different reasons, politics, turnover on elected officials, lack of vision, lack of planning, whatever it is, the town ended up having to move forward with the construction of this $13 million sewer plant. But at that time, the shock of how high the rates had to be raised forced the elected body, rightfully so, to basically not do everything they needed to do to get into compliance at that time, but certain items such as in sewage, not to get too graphic, you have solids that have to be separated from the sewage that comes in. That all right now collects at the bottom of the lagoon, that 10-acre puddle of water. And the amount of water, after a period of time, the solids settle out, the liquid gets treated in a very elementary manner now, that water goes over the banks into a stream. 20 years ago, it was state-of-the-art technology. Today, it's not state-of-the-art technology, and we're being fined potentially upwards of $500 a day for every day that we don't fix those things. As I reported a couple meetings ago, MDE has agreed to hold those fines in abeyance and potentially waive them as long as we keep moving with the sewer plant and making good headway in it. But the one thing we did not do at that time is address decommissioning the lagoon. And what that means is, we can't just abandon that lagoon and leave that giant puddle of water there with all that bad stuff floating around in the bottom of it. Now, MDE originally told us that we could hold on to that lagoon for about 10 to 15 years before we would have to deal with it. So at that time, the elected body said, let's just build the sewer plant and leave the sludge in there. MDE has said it is okay. But one of the problems we have is our new sewage treatment plant is going to deal with that sludge. And we could not at that time afford a process to deal with that sludge, which is item bullet point number two on the list, which is an estimated cost of $1.5 to $2 million to handle the sludge from the sewer plant. So what that means is, we can't decommission the lagoon the way we're going to be required by MDE, maybe in another 15 years. Maybe MDE could change its mind and come back what they've done before and said, you got to decommission it in the next five years. Well, we can't decommission that lagoon until we deal with the sludge that we're producing now. So just converting from a lagoon operating system to a wastewater treatment plant, when you combine the two together, we'll look at it basically at, you know, close to a $5 million expenditure to bring the sewer plant completely into compliance in the future. Again, that might be 10, 15 years from now, but I think it behooves its body to start projecting what those impacts are going to be and raising the money for that. The other thing we have is, we estimated back in 2009 roughly $1.9 million to replace 10,000 lineal feet of 4-H water lines in the town. 4-H water lines create problems for a variety of reasons. Number one, it's low to inadequate water pressure for the fire department in fighting fires. But more importantly, we've heard the stories of people complaining about brown water in the town. Whenever the town shuts off a hydrant or has a water leak or a water main break involving those 4-H lines, we have entire blocks of properties that just get hit with basically brown water because the lines are too small. And so that's something that residents are getting tired of, that brown water. And the fire department is doing a great job. We haven't had any major fires in town, but hypothetically, it could create a problem down the road, the lack of adequate water lines. The next item is, in order to figure out what our cost is going to be in repairing some of these things, and this is something the town has done in the past, and it's not uncommon, people get together who, you know, we only know what we know, and we don't know what we don't know, and we get together and say, let's just deal with the rates this year to deal with these long-term issues. That's not a good way for a functioning business to operate. So we need to spend a little bit of money to get professionals to do rate studies, which is what we did back in 2009, that residents are operating under the rate study now. But think how beneficial that was. Commissioner Walker can attest to this. Over the last couple of, you know, at least the last year, there have been hiccups with getting reimbursed from USDA and MDE and, you know, sizable chunks of money for this sewer plant. And we can't tell the contractor that, well, we can't pay you a bill of $500,000. The town has been able to bankroll those, in other words, in our day-to-day cash, we've been able to bankroll those expenditures because that rate study was right on point in estimating what we needed to do to be able to pay for the sewer plant. The beauty of it is, when you read between the lines, when the sewer plant is done, these expenses that we have here can be offset to some degree by the rate study that was already done. Because if we can bankroll a million or so dollars a year until we get reimbursed, which is about what we've been doing, that's pretty good. The other thing we need to do, the planning commission has heard about this before, and residents have heard about it, is we need to update our impact fee study. And what that is, is we all know that we have roughly 700 housing starts in this town where developers in the past have been given various levels of development approvals for development. They are property owners that own land. To some degree, they are protected by law on at least some level of an expectation to be able to do something with that ground. And so going forward, we're building a new sewage treatment plant and improving our water to be able to accommodate that. But we have no idea what is a fair number to charge these developers coming forward. And the expenses are so significant. We had an impact fee study done a couple years ago, including all, most of these things that are on the list, and it was estimated that the impact fees for every residential home built was going to be $32,000. So that meant before a developer even started building the $200,000 house, he was going to have to inflate the cost another $32,000 just to pay for the infrastructure needs. That becomes an issue of whether or not they can or not. And it's all well and good for us to say, well, if they can't do it, well, too bad. But we have all these legal complications created by maybe not the best planning in decades past or just some confusion about the way to do it. So we need to get our impact fee study updated to deal with today's numbers. The last time we did it was five years ago, the numbers are old. The other thing that we have that people don't realize is this town hall building is 12 years of age. And if you go in the museum, you see water stains in there, that I'm always told the building leaks like two days after they open the building. And the bathroom in there is starting to leak. We've had HVAC issues. We all know that there's like seven thermostats in this building, but not one of them controls the heat where it's supposed to be controlled. Because you heard me report in the past, our HVAC system was butchered up so bad in the original installation that when the county inspected the unit, it actually failed. But unfortunately, there was no follow-up. So we don't have the most efficient HVAC system in here. So we fixed the unit upstairs a couple years ago with a grant, but there's a variety of things that we have to fix. And think about this, when you don't, we all know in our homes, when we don't have adequate HVAC, that leads to condensation, it leads to buildings shrinking, expanding, doing all kinds of stuff. And when you look at the outside of our buildings, we have significant cracks in the brickwork all over the place. And if you went into the mayor's office, you can see his outside wall over the police has water stains coming down the drywall. And that is just the building breathing because of inadequate ventilation and a host of other things. So we had an estimate done by the engineering firm about two years ago, and they estimated about $75,000 to fix the roof on this building and the brickwork that needs to be done. And so I've added another $25,000 for, you know, by the time we get to it, there's going to be inflation in that. Police cars. You look at, we talk about how great our police department is and how effective it is. The life expectancy on a police car is really only about three to five years, five years tops. And when you think about it, you know, think of your own car. When you start to get 100,000 miles on your car, 150,000 miles on your car, you start to worry about, hey, I'm going to replace this. Some people do 150,000 miles in a 10-year period. Our police department sometimes can do it in two and a half to three years. And it's hard miles, we all know. We're not all, hopefully not, flowing down the road 80 miles an hour, stopping, going, doing all kinds of stuff like the police are, but there's a lot of wear and tear on these vehicles. So over the next three years, we did a great job in '07, '08 in replacing a fleet at that time that was about seven years of age, but now we're starting to have enormous repair costs on our police cars because we're holding on to them too long. So we need to start thinking proactively about these police cars. Our public works department, every time we see them out there plowing snow and fixing, we've all seen that red dump truck, and we've seen that backhoe. Well, that red dump truck's about 12 years of age. And anyone who uses heavy construction equipment knows that 12 years on that kind of dump truck, we're very fortunate. The backhoe that we have is close to 20 years of age. And to replace a backhoe, you're looking at about $200,000. And if we don't plan for this type of stuff, we're going to be out of backhoe one day, we're going to have the water main break that we had here on Main Street, and we're going to be scrambling with it. And it's just not a good way to run a business. We all know about the water system. We've studied and studied the best way to get water, and we've paid all kinds of consultants, and MDE has weighed in on it, and we've talked about this. We have $5 to $7 million to update our water system. In putting a water system in, we need a second water tank, so we're looking at $2 million for that. One of the things I realized today, and I'm going to show you another document, in planning ahead for some of these things like we did in '08, I realized that we never spent the roughly $200,000 for the 10-year inspection on our existing water tank, where we should be, but think of that vessel. Anyone that understands, I'm not sure what it would be, science or whatever, but, you know, the amount of, a gallon of water weighs 7.5 pounds, I think it's 7.5, eight pounds. You take 500,000 gallons and you put it in that vessel up above ground, there's a lot of stresses that are going on that tank up there. And so they should be modified or checked out every couple And so they should be modified or checked out every couple of years, and the inside recoded, re-lined. And the estimated prices of that are two, you know, $200,000 for that. And we're many years out of date of doing that. The other thing that people may remember when I first came here, we talk about inflow and infiltration, and we've gotten so out here and dealing with these things being kicked down the road that we forgot all about inflow and infiltration. Inflow and infiltration is all the rainwater that gets into our sewer system, whether it's by gutters and downspouts that are illegally connected into the sewer system, or it's manholes out on the street that are allowing water to drain into it. We at times, and you've heard me say this before, we will have about 200, you know, 200,000 to 275,000 gallons a day of sewage going into the sewer plant. You get a good 3/4 of an inch rainfall in the middle of July, and our charts will go to 400,000, 500,000 gallons of water coming in. That is inflow coming into that system. That's all the illegal hookups. Now, think about what happens. We're building a brand-new sewer plant that's going to have all kinds of pumps, impellers, electrical components that are turning on and off and doing all kinds of stuff. Think of the additional wear and tear we're going to put on our equipment if we continue to allow that infiltration to just get into the system. Think about how in the summertime, you see manhole lids that blow off. They blow up because it's a path of least resistance, and all that old 4-H and 6-H terraconda lines that we always hope holds together, that's under that same pressure. All of those joints are under that same pressure. And the thing that pops is a manhole lid, but if it doesn't, then your lines start to pop. That's all because of inflow and infiltration. And we need to deal with that stuff. Commissioner Althenreth is going to be talking tonight, and Commissioner Walker, we talked about it many times when you were on streets and sidewalks. You know, when we do these paving projects here every couple of years, that's just a drop in the bucket. The average life expectancy of a street is only about 10 years, depending upon the wear and tear. And we've only, and since I've been here, we've only probably replaced maybe 1/10th of the number of streets that we have in town that really ultimately need to be addressed. And every time we go through winter time, it just, you know, exasperates the situation. And then on top of that is Commissioner Althenreth is going to talk about. In the past, we have gotten money to pave a street, and we're like, hey, let's pave a street. We're so desperate because the street looks so bad and people are so upset that we have no choice but to just jump in there and repave the street. And we never think about the 4-H water line that's going to be buried underground that we're going to be talking about replacing in the next couple of years. So we're throwing good money out the band when we spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to pave the street, and then we come back later on and dig it up to put a water line in. And we have to stop thinking that way. And that's what's exciting about this boarding going forward, is you guys get the pleasure of trying to figure that out. So what I'm asking is, we need to do a mid-year budget review. And in this, what I'm suggesting is maybe that we have a couple of meetings on a Saturday morning that are workshop, and get the elected body together and start putting on a chart where these expenses are, and really get an understanding of where the money is going to come from. You know, with that said, you know, although the numbers are daunting, they're really not unmanageable. Believe it or not, $15 to $18 million. I haven't even addressed grants, other revenue streams, other partnerships. We've talked before about when we bring the water line in from Chester, we have entities that want to buy our water so we can put our taxpayers in the position of being a middleman, basically just taking the water from Chester, having it go through our system, and we build somebody else for it. And so those are ways to offset the expenses. Some of the ideas that I'm working on to help you guys with a mid-year budget review is I'm working with the accountant now to give me a breakdown of every single line item account. Forget about what gets capitalized and put in, you know, the way the government accounting standards are. I'm a meat and potatoes guy. I want to do cash in, cash out. And I want you guys to be able to relate to the cash in, cash out. So it's going to be beneficial to get you that. We also need to do a two-year evaluation of all sewer and water expenses done separately in order to aid in an effective rate study of how we're going to pay for this infrastructure going forward. We need to do an evaluation of all short and long-term infrastructure needs to help facilitate a new impact study. What's the sense in having an impact study done if we haven't really thought about the long-term, big capital improvements we have to do? Commissioner Althenreth is going to talk about it, the evaluation of streets and sidewalks to help project a planning model for replacement over a five-year period. And then the elected body needs to get together and start talking about a five, 10, and 20-year capital improvement plan. And the last thing I want to show you, so that you understand how significant and how we've tried to do this in the past, in the 2007 budget cycle, which was the first year I was here, we were categorizing all of this stuff. And these were expenses that we projected that we would need to spend over, you see it ranged from 2009 all the way up to 2019. So with a 10-year improvement plan to start, number one, putting money away for these expenses and, you know, plan for them. I want to give you an example of how significant it is. Look at how these numbers are, 199,000, 181,000, 184, 168, 220. And then look what they represent up at the top here, two replacement police cars, 1/3 of the cost of public works vehicles, backhoes, dump trucks, upgrading computers, town hall replacement of air conditioning, heater upgrades, the infrastructure of the building, new roof on the building. These things, just in one year's time, represented, you know, just a chunk of those expenses. Now think about what legal expenses of over $200,000 in hard cost. Think about what that could have went for. And that is how we have fallen way behind. That's what I talk about, when we talk about four years of just chaos and distractions, and that's where it's cost us. The roadmap is right there. We talked about doing it in 2009, and then in 2010, up until this past year, it's just been, you know, all over the place. We've been, at times, struggling to do, and I'm going to say it, because of the circus at times, we've been struggling to pay attention to these real things, and the cam got kicked down the road. Now it's our collective jobs, the staff, elected body, and residents to start dealing with this. So I just want to say, the numbers are daunting, but they're not insurmountable if we just get our heads wrapped around it and really spend good money, be wise about what we do, and get the planning process started now. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Town Administrator.
I'd like to make a motion now that we have a mid-year budget evaluation. Several of us weren't here during the budget at that time, and I think it's a good time for us to reevaluate where it's coming to pass six months, so we can plan for where we'll be going in the next six and preparing for the next physical budget. So I'd like to make a motion at this time that we empower the Town Administrator to set a date that we can all make and have that meeting as soon as possible.
A second. It's been moved and seconded. Any more discussion?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I mean, from my standpoint, I agree, just even to understand what it is currently and to be able to start to think about what we're going to have to pass this July, you know, it gives a good chance to kind of review and start to piece something together. So I think it's a good idea.
I mean, my only discussion point is a comment, and that is that I'm truly disappointed that boards passed from the 1990s on didn't plan for stuff like this to occur. You know as well as I do, Town Administrator, that I had conversations with you about small things, aesthetic things of, you know, that you'd see green mold growing on the side of town hall, and we need to get it power washed. And in my mindset, you know, why didn't they think of this years before? Even the little things, they just disregarded. And what's hard for me is, it comes on this board's shoulders to make the tough decisions, and we are the ones that are going to get the negative press, the negativity from it because of boards passed that decided not to make a roadmap for the future. So it's going to be on our shoulders to have to deal with this, and it's going to be something that we're going to have to deal with. And like I said, I'm a little disappointed that they didn't plan for this years ahead because now we're stuck with it, and we have to make the decisions.
It's worth noticing, Mr. Mayor, that, or worth noting that underneath that green mold tend to be rotted wood.
Yeah.
And, you know, we've had to do some repair work that could have been avoided had the building been properly maintained.
Yep, absolutely. So any more discussion?
Did we vote on it yet?
No, we're, we were still under discussion.
Okay.
All in favor of setting a meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
It passes. Okay. Historical Preservation Commission, is there a report this evening?
Our first meeting of the year is tomorrow night. Welcome all new members. The membership starts this month.
Okay, thank you so much. Any old business? Any new business? I did want to say it's not a new business item, I forgot to put this on my mayor's report. I did accept a nomination to the Maryland Rural Council, so I will be serving as a member on that. And I also will be attending the inauguration, as long as the weather holds out, next week for Governor Hogan. So any more new business besides my comment? Hearing none. Commissioner Althenreth, the floor is yours.
Mayor, could you come to me at the end, please? I have a lot tonight, and just want to get a little more notes in.
Commissioner Scully.
The Rising Above Domestic Violence and Addiction page has been growing in its followers. Before the holidays, one of the things that we were highlighting was the statistically, and the chief mentioned this, as assaults have gone up, but statistically, throughout the nation, assaults increase during the holidays through the new year. So a lot of the messages we were putting out there, both inspirational and informative, were raising awareness for that statistic and, you know, to watch out for, what things to look out for and what resources were available. I can say as coming here tonight, our followers are up to 332, and that's certainly with the health of our Town Administrator for knowing how to promote the page. I'm not as technologically savvy at that, but the other interesting thing is that our page reaches beyond, it's intended to obviously provide messages to Rising Sun residents. It reaches far beyond that. We have a multi-state following that's as far as Michigan and pretty far down south. So as friends and family have shared it with one another, I had one particular post, which was pretty simple. It was, "Don't let someone else's addiction make you feel guilty." And that had 1,600, it was shared with 1,600 people out of that. And at that time, we weren't at 332 followers. I think we were probably under 200, but 1,600 people saw that one simple message. So it's working, and we're proud of it. There's certainly more to be done there. January 26 through February 1 is National Drug Facts Week, and we are waiting for approval from Cecil County Public Schools to offer in partnership with the Arts, Rising Sun Arts Council and the Police Department, a art contest and show within the middle school and the high school. And again, waiting for approval to be able to do that, but the structure of that, as it was presented, would be that we would ask the participating students to create art on, the theme is, "How Has Addiction Affected Your Life?" Stigma is a big part of addiction in the families in Rising Sun, and sometimes they're not permitted to talk about it outside the home. So if art is a medium for them to express their views about that, we want to give them that opportunity. This is through drugabuse.gov, so we have an opportunity to register with that site, and they'll offer us free informational materials to hand out to the students as well. So that will be January 26 through February 1, and hopefully, within the next day or so, we'll know whether we're approved for that. What we intend to do is, once the art is created during that week, it'll be presented in the hallways. We have three awards planned, which would be the Rising Sun Arts Council Award for Artistic Achievement, there will be a Mayor's Choice Award, and there will be a Commissioner's Choice Award. So the highest honors in both the middle and high school will receive, the students will receive a gift certificate. And we also wanted to give something to the parents for their support. We're raising donations for that, so I would ask for anyone who is interested in participating in that. But we will be going out throughout the community to raise donations so that we can say what the quantifiable value of those gift certificates will be. The Mayor's Choice and the Commissioner's Choice Awards will be art supplies. Once we make the choices, and there will be, I also say there will be a number of honorable mentions, but once we make the choices in the school, I think what the students will see is just a number of arts selected without knowing what the choices are. We will bring them to town hall to be viewed, invite the families to a meeting, a public meeting, so that we can present the awards at the public meeting, the top awards, as well as the Choice Awards, and then the number of honorable mentions, so we can recognize everybody that participated in that and creates awareness for addiction. So that is my, that's what I have going on. That's my report. Thank you.
I did want to say, I thoroughly enjoy sometimes reading the messages, the encouraging messages that you post on that Facebook account. Some of them, you know, you can even be having an awful day, and it picks you up definitely. So I'm excited to see where this goes. And I know I will be asking you to, again, attend the Maryland's, the mayor's Drug Task Force with me to work on projects with them as well. Commissioner Walker.
My report will be fairly short. The wastewater treatment plant construction is proceeding nicely. We, the Town Administrator and I were scheduled to go to a meeting at the end of the month to discuss our financing for the new water line. It turns out that I will not be able to attend that meeting, but the Town Administrator will be going to that meeting and relay information back to us. So we're working on the new water line, and the sewer plant's proceeding well.
Thank you, Commissioner Walker. I did want to say Delegate Hornberger gave me some comments that he's heard around the county about how nicely it's moving forward now, our sewer plant is. And that speaks of your leadership with that department.
Just a, something that I just remembered. I got a phone call this morning from a gentleman in Howard County, was asking me about our water and sewer plant and our new water line. I don't, I didn't get his name, I don't know who he was, but I gave him the information that he asked for.
Okay, okay. Commissioner Warnock.
So the cold weather's kind of holding up certain things, like the slide replacement at the Richardson Park. We're waiting for the temperature to get warm enough to be able to replace that sliding board that was damaged back in the fall. The, we also have some damage to the, or not damage, there's a, one of the pillars of the new playground equipment at Veterans Park has a little bit of movement in it, so we're waiting for the temperature to get warm enough to be able to take the rubber up and reconcretin that one pole. At this point, it's nothing, it's on the staircase, so it's not like something that affects the main structural portion of the, of the equipment to make it dangerous or anything. So, but as soon as the weather cooperates on some of those things, we'll start getting some of that repair work done. As far as the trails go, we're actually hoping to utilize the cold to get some loads of stone into the, into the trail system. You know, while the ground's frozen, we can drive across it without tearing up the park. So it's one of those things where I need the ground cold, but I need it to thaw out, so it's no wind situation really for the parks right now. But we are proceeding with our projects, and the weather's holding us up a little bit on some things, but we're still making some progress. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Warnock. Commissioner Althenreth.
First thing, I want to start with some planning and zoning stuff. Our next planning and zoning meeting will be on January 20 because of Martin Luther King Day is next Monday, the 19th, which is our regularly scheduled night for having our meetings. So we haven't been together since before the holidays, so we've got a lot to go over. We're still working on our town's, what did we, it's been a month, I've done forgot what we called it.
Land development.
Land development, which also-- Land development, which also included a lot of, what's the acronym that goes with that?
A, A.P.F.I.
A.P.F.O., Adequate Public Facilities Ordinance, which we didn't have and which we really need going forward to make sure that problems we've seen in the town with some of the larger developments, the Summer Hill, Rising Hills, Maple Heights, Brian's Grace, that those items, those things don't happen again. If you will look at the KCI Technologies Letter, that's, project name is a Rising Sun, Rising Sun Zoning Map Update Letter. Calvin and I met with Todd Frey, who's our town engineer from KCI, back to beginning of December. Commissioner Warnock, Commissioner Walker, you both know our good old zoning map up here that we've been working with for years that really doesn't allow us to do the important work we need. If you had to pick out where you lived in there or a parcel next door to you, you couldn't. So, what we asked KCI to do was... Exactly. You'd have to come to that stop sign, make a turn, make another turn. It's not really there. So, we asked KCI to look at this and give us an estimate for upgrading this to the current, sorry. The current maps are done digitally with the GIS system, Geographical Information Systems, which has different overlays that go to it. So, they came back with an estimate for us to convert our old map to the new GIS digital style of $5,000. Page two of that letter gives you a breakdown of the work. It's going to have about 52 hours in it, which isn't too bad. And going forward, the Planning and Zoning Board has needed this for years. Commissioner Warnock and I have been trying to work off this thing since 2008, and you can attest to how badly we need this done. So, I'd like to make a motion tonight that we approve the estimate to KCI for $5,000 to replace our current zoning map with the digital GIS model going forward.
I second that. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I'd like to say, well, I was just gonna say, the, I mean, we've had cases in the past where we had to have significant staff time investigating what the proper zoning was on parcels of land because we couldn't tell off the map. There was dispute over the, over the, so I mean, I, yeah. And this is like one of those things that's necessary for us to continue to function as, as the sewer plant completes. And not to mention the legal aspect, we could, you know, we could step on somebody's toes illegally this way. One important thing to notice is, on our map, that Route 273 is not contiguous through here. It comes up and stops, then it comes back down here and picks up. We all know that's not really the way it goes. So, you know, that's, that's a, what may look like a minor, but it's a major thing that needs to be fixed in there. And then also an overlay to show the properties, the businesses. And then we can also going forward decide if we need to make some changes in our zoning destinations in town. And actually, as we get into this community economic development revitalization program that Commissioner Warnock's heading up, we can determine areas that we may not have known we had or areas that we're showing that weren't true to what we got. So, it's very important. I think even though it's $5,000, that's a low number for what we'll get, and it's information that we can add to digitally going forward, and we don't have to draw it up. This has probably been around since 2000. I know we've been dealing with it since 2007.
Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Thank you.
I have some more, Mr. Mayor. Back in December, we had a lot of meetings before the holidays. Myself and the town administrator, the Public Works Department. You know, in our, in our meeting packets from the December 9, you can see there where before the meeting that night, I'd met with KCI also to talk about looking over our streets and sidewalks. When I became Streets and Sidewalk Commissioner, I started getting a lot of emails from residents about, you know, "Hey, I've got this problem. I got that problem," and it started adding up. And I created a spreadsheet to make sure I didn't lose track of anybody, and I share that with Calvin and Ron Thomas so we can stay on top of it. But we went out and looked at just the people's emails that I'd got in the roads, and we kept getting distracted by the, what I called the squirrel running across the street. Because every time we went to a property to look at a notification I'd got, we'd saw this. Well, is he talking about this, or are they talking about that? And we spent quite a bit of time that morning riding around, looking at those and seeing a lot of things and noticing a lot of things that you couldn't see, if that makes sense. Because it's not always what you can see when it comes to streets and sidewalks because you have, like Calvin said, the water lines, you have your stormwater pipes, you have your sewer piping, you have your electrical conduit underneath. And coming from a mechanical engineering background in maintenance, I learned years ago, and I tell people, this is so true. You, if you don't take care of these things, you can pay me now, or you can pay me much more later. Because 90% of the time, it doesn't get any cheaper. So, as we rode around that day and looked at these things, we thought, okay, well, we better bring in some professionals. And we talked about this back in December. So, KCI got back to us this week with their evaluation and estimate. And this is going to work toward the capital planning that Calvin was talking about earlier in the presentation he had up. Because we've got so many things on that list that we need to plan for and put some money away for and find new ways of getting some money for that, other than just focusing strictly on tax, 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 tax. What other ways can we come up with of revenue streams without putting all the burden strictly on property taxes, which we know that has to be done? But if we plan properly, we're not going to have to dump it out there in one big lump sum because of proverbly kicking the can down the road. We all know we put money away in our, our personal bank accounts and save for a rainy day. We prepare our homes before winter, and then we prepare for summer. If not, something's going to happen. You're going to have a broken water pipe, you're going to have a broken downspout, you're going to have something, cracked sidewalk, something that happened that you didn't know about possibly because everything looked good on the surface. So, we asked KCI to come in and give us an estimate to go out and look at our roads, look at our streets, look at our sidewalks, look at all of our water connections, our valve boxes, our stormwater ports. You know, we recently had a big stormwater issue down in, on Kepler's Mill, and there's other ones hiding under there that haven't showed themselves yet. So, that's where we need professionals to come in and help us with that. So, we have a second letter from KCI for a project for road evaluation study. And just to go down to some for you, because this is going to be quite intense. KCI will perform a field inspection of the existing town roads located within the town boundaries and repair, prepare a report summarizing the results of investigations and our recommendations for future roadway improvement projects. We estimate the town currently maintains approximately 44 roads totaling 41,000 linear feet. We anticipate the work could be performed in the following stages. Stage one, initial roadway inspection and rating. And that was one of the things I'd talked about before, is when we got out there, Calvin and I, and we started looking at issues, we was like, okay, everything looks like it needs to be done first. The road that Commissioner Scully lives on, we had a couple of driveways down there, we did, and sections of that road are coming apart. And that's an excellent place if you're rainwater and you want to become stormwater runoff damage, go, go to that road. Forgot the name of the road. Pearl Street. Oh, yeah. You go down to the bottom of the hill where the stream comes behind Harringtons and passes the town park. I'm thinking that very soon, we're going to see that come up over 273 one of these times. Because when we get some of these storms we seem to be getting these days, either that creek is getting smaller or we're getting more rain than we ever have. And those are the kind of things we need to prepare for before the one giant expense. Jane, you remember when I found the washout across from Bucks, where that stream comes under there and was swirling around and took out giant boulders out from under the sidewalk? So, it's things like that that we're going to have them go out and look at. Stage two would be an estimate for expenses, including direct expenses, prints, mileage, and hourly rates listed below. Also in stage two, they would be doing a priority of one and two roadways. What needs to be done now? What can wait a couple of years? What areas may look like the road's good, but just like, I think it's, if I pronounce it correctly, Crowther's Street down here. You can see where a pipe has failed going down through there, and we've had to pave the middle of the street several times because there's a pipe failing underneath there. So, why come in and do the whole street and have that section continue? So, when Calvin talks about throwing good money after bad, we don't want to go in and pave a road if a professional can tell us, hey, don't do that yet because I see where there's pipes under there that need to be dug up. So, we need them to give us direction for that. And then, number three would be also, give us an estimate of what this winter is going to do to us. You know, we're here right at the beginning of January. The worst part of winter is still to come. So, we might have looked at it back in October and November, and then who knows what we're going to get? You know, we get our worst weather in February, it seems like, around here. It's always a great President's Day snow. So, in order to have KCI come in and do all this stuff for us and help us to plan for replacing sidewalks, streets, stormwater management, as well as anything else that we don't see but that they have equipment for looking at. We're looking at a total of $23,425, Commissioner Walker. You and I talked about this before. This came in higher than I expected. But one thing about this, you can't buy a car for that much these days, so it's really not that high. There's a, a lot of insurance is the way I look at this price. If I, you know, I had somebody come out and look at things at my home, like replacing my air conditioner next spring, and I didn't like the price, but I knew going forward, before I get there, that is what I feel I bring to this position, is that forethought of maintenance. And the more, the better preventive maintenance you do, the less you're going to have to pay that person later. Pay me now or pay me more later. That old adage stays true to this day. So, I would like to make a motion today that we approve KCI's estimate of $23,425 to give us a thorough evaluation of our streets, sidewalks, a rating of our streets and sidewalks as priorities, and also to let us know what roads may need stormwater management work underneath, water and sewer piping that could be going bad, that needs work before we go in and pave it and then have to dig it back up, and that money be gone. So, we want to, what I'm trying to get is that we, we fix problem one, then fix problem two, and then we put the pretty smooth surface on the top afterwards. And I think that's where we need, KCI's been very good to us. They, the last job they did for us, Commissioner Warnock, you know, they did a really nice job. And actually, it came in significantly under budget. So, one thing that we would like to do, and then I've talked to Calvin about, is plan for the worst when we do an estimate because it is that. It's an estimate. And we always want to shoot a little higher on that estimate because we feel so much better when it comes in under. And working with KCI here, I've seen that they do good work. They're very thorough. They don't, they come in, they meet with us and spend the time. We've got some more meetings with them coming up, and it's be part of our mid-year budget review. And this will help us plan and put away and save for these two, five, and 10-year projects we've got coming up. Calvin, is there anything I left out of that? Because we talked quite a bit last week and today before the meeting. And it's been a long day, so in case I've left anything out, could you help?
No, in terms of covering all the details of it, I think you covered everything.
Thank you. So, we have a motion on the floor.
Is there a second?
A second for discussion.
Okay, discussion?
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Is it, I think I already know the answer to this, but is it a budgeted expense?
Directly, no. Indirectly, some of it is. And what I mean by that is, every year, we budget engineering work, and we have about $5,000 of engineering work in there that's not, that we haven't done any street repaving per se. I mean, to play it safe, no, it's not a budgeted item.
I, I don't disagree with, it was a great presentation, and I appreciate that. It was very informative, and I don't disagree with the need to understand this. And of course, spending any amount of money always gives me angst, but there was, there's a lot of expenditures, like legal fees that we had to make that we didn't get to sit here and vote on. So, I, we are behind. So, that's the statement that I'll make is, yeah, I just wanted to understand where it put us financially, but I, there's parts of it that I just, I simply can't disagree with, that we need to understand this and get our arms around it.
Well, let me, let me say this. We also project other expenditure items much higher. In other words, fortunately, this is a one-time expense. So, like when you don't replace employee positions, you reallocate that money, and we do have one employee position that we did not fill. So, the, you know, we got to be careful how much we redistribute the funds, obviously, but there is a little bit of wiggle room. It will require tightening the belt. You know, the, I mean, the mid-year budget review will tell us a lot more. Because when you don't replace an employee, you have insurance that you didn't project. And one of the things, in other words, when we look to hire a new employee, we estimate paying the highest premium payment that you would have to pay. So, a new employee, there could be $70,000 or something like that sitting there just for the acquisition of a new employee that we didn't hire. Now, not all 70, not all 23 is going to be absorbed by this because we use that money and other avenues of things that we have done.
Another thing, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner Scully, another thing that I, I talked to Calvin. I came in early today, and we discussed this because, you know, it is an unbudgeted amount, and it's, but it was something we needed to do. And the fact that it's coming in in stages could help us so that it's not one big check written at one time. KCI, you know, has done, you know, what I've found, and Mayor Marion, you've been around. You know, KCI has done a lot of work for the town. You know, we also have a lot of work that needs to be done to this building that can't be put off or put down the road. So, we would have to probably go at this in stages as it's put up on here. But they're estimating that the total of all three stages could be 23. Now, it's broken down into stage, stage one of 8,135, stage two, 11,000. And not everything can get done at one time. And then also, you know, with this winter coming on, they can't look at every road and really evaluate its condition at this time because when they come out, it may be snow and ice covered. We are getting ready to go into the worst part of winter. So, that was also one of my big concerns when I talked to Calvin, was, hey, is it budgeted? You know, we haven't spent any money in planning and zoning in a long time. Everybody on that board works for free and puts in a lot of time, as you know, Commissioner Walker. And we, so that, that does keep expenses down for that department. So, I think, you know, we can just, you know, we know what's going on here, and this will help us plan for where we need to put money away. And all you got to do, you don't have to drive very far around town. We've only had three water main breaks, and we have been pretty lucky through these couple of snaps that we haven't had other things. So, I think we can kind of spread this out. We don't have to write a check all at one time. KCI will work with us on... KCI will work with us on this, but it's, it's work that we need to get started on.
Can we, I mean, what I'm thinking is, you know, we've got three obvious stages here. I don't think they're going to complete stage one in the next, you know, two, three weeks or something. I mean, that's going to take some duration of time.
Probably not.
You know, do we have, could we break this down, do, like basically approve stage one tonight? Like, you know, we could make a...
I, I thought about that too, Calvin. Could we...
And then move stage two and three into the budget cycle, so that we're looking at them in next year's budget? I mean...
You can. The only, the only downside to that is the third stage is to tell you how much money the whole thing's going to cost.
Yeah.
So it's hard to put it in the budget, next year's budget, when you don't get the final determination of what it costs.
And, and the other thing that the final stage three is going to do, it's going to tell us a really big number, but it's going to tell us a smaller number of what needs to be done. Today, we just need brakes. If we wait a whole lot longer, we're going to need brakes, rotors, and everything, coming from, you know, just mechanic speak on my end. But, yeah, I thought about the same thing.
Can they even do all three stages in the next six months?
Yeah, because they know that we want it, they know we need it for our budget cycle.
How...
And if you think about it, in order to pave, we have to make a, if we were to pave in the spring or summer, we need to pretty much make a decision to do that by like March, April. By the time you get your bid specs done, and get it out to bid, and work around the weather, so...
I think we need to have a guide and what we need to do, and that's what this will do for us. We don't have to, we may have to delay doing some of the work that needs to be done simply because of our current expenses with water and sewer and, and other things that are going on, but, but the guide, the guide we need.
Yes, and that's, that's excellent. You know, that's, that's what this basically will give us, is a guide, a two, two, 10, two, five and 10-year plan as to what's good. Now, some of the roads are, like where you live, where I live, some of these roads around here, were just recently paved, some sidewalks were just done. Another thing we are looking to do under streets and sidewalks is, you know, the, the way that that gets paid for going forward. Every sidewalk within the town limits is not solely the responsibility of the town. Many of them have been replaced at the town's expense, but that was, is going to be a one-time only thing going forward. We can start backing out the expense of certain sidewalks, because we're no longer going to be responsible for those.
Commissioner Scully?
My question, I think you already answered it, was the life cycle of once you get this end result of the, of, you know, the total study of what needs to be done and what the estimated cost of it is, what's lifespan of that? But you said they're going to, they're going to spec it out two years, five years, 10 years, so...
That's, that's currently what we were looking at, and, and that can be adjusted.
So it won't age out of this information very quickly, so this information won't become stale very quickly.
Right. And, and with the, the new terms in office, it will help, you know, a commissioner stay with that project longer. Myself, Commissioner Walker, I mean Commissioner Warnock, and, and the mayor, you know, were just elected to three-year terms. So this is something that becomes my responsibility, and I can see it going forward, stay in touch with KCI and anybody else, and now we, we had a really good contractor come in. But like I said, the other thing is a guide, let's not go and pave a street that really needs paving, that have, may have a pipe underneath of it, that they can tell that depression in the road is because of a bad pipe or a failing surface around a pipe, such as what we just had down Keppel's Mill with a stormwater runoff pipe down there.
I agree, we're definitely in reaction mode right now, and we need to be more proactive.
So we, exactly.
I just, my concern was just that, you know, if, let's just say, best-case scenario, that they say you could get by five years with, you know, some of this infrastructure, you know, then it's in potentially another administration, and then they're going to turn around and spend the same money on a study. So I'm just trying to avoid that, you know, redoing the same work, so I just, those are just my...
And some of this work, like we said, you know, KCI's been with the town for a while. Some of this work, they may possibly have, but it needs a fresh look, because it got started, and then with all the calamity that was going on in past administration, nothing got done, because we were too busy, you know, everybody was too busy fighting a different battle that was going on. So now that this board, I don't feel as bad as fact that we're going to have to make the hard decisions. We are going to make the hard decisions just as we do it at our own house, because we're not just the members of this board, we're all residents of this town and, and have the same expenses as everybody that comes to the audience or sets home and watches this video. It affects us all directly also, and I want to make sure myself going forward that I know what I'm looking at before I have to do it, so that it doesn't cost me more later. It's kind of like buying some insurance.
I would say, I think that that's the one thing that is missing, is the fact that some people don't understand that this board pays the same tax amount that everyone else does, all the residents do, so it does affect us. So I wanted to ask before I turn the floor over, because I know you were trying to do something there, do you concur with Commissioner Alton Reese's statement that, you know, that we should move forward with this from an administrative perspective, or do you think personally that it's something that we could do at the next budget and have it budgeted for?
I'll answer it twofold. Number one, if you don't get the information of how much this is going to cost, you're going to go into next year's budget blind, not having any idea what it's going to cost. Secondly, it's sort of like what I had said to you today when we were talking about some other things. What I showed you earlier, and, and I know, I know the frustration the board has about what prior boards did in the past, but they were pretty much faced with the same dilemma you guys are feeling right now. On top of that, they had, there, there were communication issues with residents, just leave it that way, there were all kinds of things all over the place, and I've always said that sometimes people don't let the facts get in the way of a good argument, and that creates confusion. So I think, I think it's important to move forward with it now. With that said, let me give you, this is a page, if you look behind you, the page out of the streets and sidewalks budget alone, and there's a couple items that, I'm, I'm going to tell you where we have wiggle room in this year's budget, but I'm also going to tell you that at the end of the year, with everything that we're looking to do, I think as a round number, we might come, in a worst-case scenario, $100,000 over budget in the general fund, conceivably, with everything that could possibly happen if we can't delay it into the next budget cycle. We might finish about, my feeling is about $100,000. We have $1.8 million in reserve, and although we always try to operate on money in and money out, this is one of those examples where we're, we're not going into the reserve to do something that doesn't have a lasting benefit for the town. We're going into the reserve to put good money up front, so we don't spend bad money down the road. So within your budget, if you remember, we figured that we were not going to get Mr. Montgomery to pave Maple Heights at a timely manner, so we budgeted for that, $100,000. The project did not cost us $100,000. The other item is you go down, like halfway down, we, you know, this is something, we're kicking the can down the road, but we do need to talk about sealing the municipal parking lot. That could wait till the next budget cycle.
And also this whole discussion around stormwater management, we may want to hold off on that to find out how that works out, because that could change anyway.
The other thing, if you notice halfway down, I have the number $14,000, because the winter was so severe last year that we paid a boatload of money in salt that we normally don't do. That was an unbudgeted expense last year, if you see, it's not projected. Just to play it a little bit safe, I put another $5,000 in there. We're not even going to touch that this year unless really go south, winter-wise. We're past the midway point of winter, and our reserves are fine in salt. So, you know, there's a couple thousand dollars there. Down in the engineering, this is what I was telling you about, the street repaving project. Other than Maple Heights, which was engineering for like one or two days of an inspector, we did not do any new paving projects this year. We did all the paving projects last year. So we have some residual money left over in that category there that is available. So to recap, in a worst-case scenario, I think we might end up being $100,000 over budget, but we're talking about, you know, taking care of this, taking care of some other things down the road. We might have to go into our general reserve funds. That's why we need to do the mid-year review to see what not hiring employees impact that was. So it's not going to kill us. Let me say that, it's not going to kill us. To answer Commissioner Scully's question in more detail, one of the things, I think what you were alluding to, when we're putting the project into a rating of one to five, let's assume that, and I forget how, whether five is the worst or five is the best, but whatever, in the worst-case scenario, that's all stuff that we're going to try to do in the next two to three years tops.
Okay.
The stuff that's in good shape would be kicked down the road for now, but we're not paying them to do estimated evaluations of those roads, because it wouldn't make sense to do that. So phase three, and doing the estimations, is only based upon figuring out what it's going to cost for the two categories that are more critical. So we're not throwing money away to have a future board have to redo the evaluations down the road.
Okay, thank you.
You know, another thing that we, we have to think about from a maintenance issue, and Calvin and I had talked about this, looking up, try to find a piece of equipment, you know, not just the, the sealing of the municipal parking lot, but a lot of our roads in town do not get any type of maintenance sealing. If you ever are out in the county or the city, you'll see a crew out there, and a guy with a wand, and they're filling cracks and sealing them, and that also helps, not kick the can down the road later, but it helps extend the life of that road. We see it on our street that was just done about 10 years ago, with cracks, and that's where all that water goes, it freezes, pushes it up. So the, the better we do on the maintenance, preventive maintenance, the, the longer life we can get out of a piece of equipment, or out of a road, a street, a sidewalk, and we just need to, as Commissioner Scully said, be more proactive than reactive. And I think we have the, the board together now that can do that, starting with this mid-year budget review.
Any more discussion? All in favor of approving the expense?
Aye.
Passes.
Thank you.
Does that conclude your report?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I so move.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourns.